Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the city council meeting for this evening. First up on the agenda is Rock Hall. Terrell?
Mayor Gill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dukes.
Here.
Councilmember Buckland.
Here.
Councilmember Mann.
Here.
Councilmember Starkey.
Here. If you'd all please rise for the invocation.
Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this day that we have here in our community, the opportunity to recognize people who have succeeded and have helped put Uba City on the map. We just pray that you would bless and be with us here tonight. Bless us as we make the decisions that affect our citizens and our city. And be with us, we pray, in your most holy name. Amen.
Amen. Councilmember Starkey, could you lead us in pledge allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I want to thank each and every one of you that are here today for the special recognition for our Uba City residents, Denise and Perry Martin, the co-owners of California Chrome. And it is truly, it has been an honor for us, for the residents of the city of Uba City, to come together and absolutely support this beautiful, beautiful horse. And people that have never watched hor- race, horse racing, or have never loved horse racing, I can truly tell you, I have truly fallen in love with this horse and the racing. We were very, very honored to be able to celebrate the last race here in Uba City. Were we able to close the entire street? And regardless of how hot it was, about 105, 106, I don't think the heat bothered anybody in this community to come out and support this race. But there is absolutely no way that we could have done this without the help of some of our community members that I do want to recognize. Our three of our large sponsors are here, our grand sponsor Sun Suite. Jean Dobson's here. Jean, raise your hand. We have John Cassidy, our CEO, here at Central Credit Union. John? We have Terry Bentley with Recology. And we have Dee Dee Brady with the Sapphire Group that did the entire marketing within a 10-day period. So as we begin, first of all, we do have a proclamation to present and also a key to the city of Uba City. And being on the council for six years and watching the other council members before me, I can't remember the last time when a key was presented to anyone. And it's absolutely my great honor and a pleasure that I get to do this to yourselves. But before we do that, once after I do that, we'll also have a certificate from John Garamendi's office, Congressman Garamendi's office. But first, we've got a little video that our council member, former mayor John Buckland's, put together, a five-minute video to kind of give us a little rundown. So let's watch that first.
Fast forward, three years later, California Chrome began to make a name for himself, winning three straight in 2014, including the prestigious California Cup Derby, San Felipe Cup, and most recently, the Santa Anita Derby last month.
California Chrome will be carrying the huts of California all the way to the Kentucky Derby.
They're up in the Kentucky Derby. A good start for California Chrome, he broke a bit outwardly. He'll be among the early leaders. Harry's Holiday fires off fast from the inside. There goes Cheeto, and California Chrome is right with them. Uncle Si, California Chrome and Cheeto will set the pace in the Derby. Now they make their way into the far turn, and it is Uncle Si, the leader. Cheeto is alongside, and California Chrome is third, just outside the leaders. Samrod is right next to him. The four of them are together, then intense holiday. Temperature, Metal Count dances right there in contention. Dance with Fate is next, and they're coming to their top of the stretch. And California Chrome makes his move for the lead. It is California Chrome on the outside. Samrod runs ahead with the eight pole. California Chrome is pulling away. California Chrome into the final furlong. He's got a five-length lead on his competition. It is California Chrome in front. And from the back of the pack on the outside, from ending, Chrome is taking second. But California Chrome shines right in the Kentucky Derby.
Derby dreams do come true.
They're up in the Preakness. And California Chrome had a great start. He comes out of the gate very quickly, and Pablo Del Monte is the fastest one. He's going to take the lead, and Victor Espinoza is getting California Chrome to the outside of him early. So Social Inclusion's not in front. There goes the Philly Ria Antoni. Social Inclusion is in fourth early on. General A-Rod is in fifth, up toward the inside, then Dynamic Impact. Great Weekend Fire, then Rosie the Prank Nick outside of horses. Right on Curlin, a second, lasting kid free trails. And the opening quarter mile is 23 and two foot seconds. And it is Pablo Del Monte, the leader. A 46 and four half mile for Pablo Del Monte, a long shot, who leads the Preakness field into the far turn. Ria Antoni, the Philly is second, and California Chrome moves now to the outside. Now he takes second, and Social Inclusion goes with him. He's countrywide. California Chrome right to the outside of Pablo Del Monte, and Social Inclusion runs up on the outside of California Chrome. And now the two of them are heads apart as they come toward the top of the stretch. California Chrome, Social Inclusion on the outside. Pablo Del Monte, right on Curlin, is closing on the far outside. California Chrome comes into the final furlong with a two-length lead. Right on Curlin on the outside, he's trying to pick him. California Chrome reaching for the wire, another 16. On the outside, right on Curlin, dead end of California Chrome has won the contest.
The green continues. The Triple Crown green is still alive.
I think everyone in Uba City did a standing ovation for California Chrome when he won today. And of course, we had to come out to the Happy Viking to watch California Chrome cross the finish line along with all of his adoring fans. Did you ever doubt him? California Chrome killing it at the Preakness Stakes, winning today weeks after taking the Kentucky Derby.
Showing that you can do something for nothing if you have a dream.
Take it from the mayor and vice mayor. California Chrome was already the pride of Uba City. And at the Happy Viking, there was never any competition.
Also a story that may come along once in our lifetime, the race for the Triple Crown. The excitement is seen everywhere for California Chrome. But if you want all the green and purple you can handle, gallop to the horse owner's hometown, Uba City. News 10's Carlos Sessa, live, they are getting ready to party. Well, we are just two days away from the actual event out here, and you can already feel the excitement now. Both residents and businesses are coming together to show off their Chrome fever. And despite this heat that we've been experiencing the past couple of days, thousands of people are still expected on Saturday.
Tomorrow, California Chrome could become the first Triple Crown winner in 36 years, but only if he wins the Belmont Stakes. Horse racing rarely gets this exciting, and the epicenter of that excitement is his owner's hometown of Uba City. KRC, our news channel seven's Jerry O'Lenon, shows us how the town is getting ready for a very big party.
Horse racing's capital of the world, at least tomorrow it is.
California Chrome's gallop toward the Triple Crown gave Uba City something to be proud of, and residents here say that is victory enough.
I guess Jackie's in the audience, huh? Is that you, Jackie?
Yeah.
I'm just gonna have you both come up here, like me.
Stand right here behind the Uba City sign. First, I've got a proclamation here to read. Welcome, Uba City residents and proud co-owners of California Chrome, Perry and Denise Martin. We are honored to have you both here today and present the key to the city for your positive national recognition. California has a long and proud thoroughbred racing history dating back to some 160 years. In spring of 2014, California Chrome won the 140th Kentucky Derby and 139 Preakness Stakes. This is the first time a California red colt swept the first two legs of the Triple Crown. California Chrome became the fourth California-born Derby winner and the first since 1962, and California's fifth Preakness winner and the first since 1986. And it takes a very special horse to reach national prominence by winning multiple races at multiple tracks across the country. Perry and Denise Martin's national recognition generated excitement, positive energy in Uba City community, embracing our hometown heroes at the Belmont Stakes. The Uba City community celebrated by wearing their best Derby hats and the team colors purple and green at the viewing party on Pluma Street cheering on California Chrome. Now therefore, be it resolved that I Cash Gill, mayor of the city of Uba City, on behalf of our entire city council, hereby recognize the outstanding performance of California Chrome during his remarkable run for Thoroughbred Horse Racing's Triple Crown, and in particular, for his tremendous victories in the Kentucky Derby and the Preakness Stakes. First of all, let me present the both of you with a proclamation, sign myself, on behalf of the entire city council. Congratulations. Secondly, the main thing, of course, which opens every door in the city of Uba City. Don't know about the stoplights and traffic tickets, chief, but yeah, Sierra Central Vault, I'm sure it will. On behalf of the city council, the residents of this wonderful city of Uba City, it is my great honor to present to you both the key to the city of Uba City. It says here, "Uba City, driven by horsepower, Perry and Denise Martin, California Chrome, 2014." In addition, we've got a shirt for yourself with a small little key that I have there as well. Perry, same thing, a shirt with a small key as well, you can keep with you all the time. As well as a gift basket for the city of Uba City to the both of yourselves, yes. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, everybody. We're very pleased to be here today. Happy we could come out and meet all the fine people in Uba City. I know you were cheering for us. We saw you on TV. It looked like you were having a great time. We had a great time, too, even though we came in fourth. But we're making great strides now. He's all healed up. And we're shooting for the Pennsylvania Derby on September 20th, and then on to the Breeders' Cup, the first of November. And if he does well in the Breeders' Cup, we've been invited to a special invitational race in Japan. And we think we're gonna start to go international. We need to show the world that California breeds not only the best horses in America, but the best horses in the world, so.
Might I ask Jeanne Cleaver to come up on behalf of Congressman John Garamendi? She's got her certificate that she would like to present to both of you.
What a great night. I just want to say thank you so much for shining such a bright light on our community and sharing your beautiful horse with all of us and allowing us to open our hearts to him. And he just affected not only Uba City, but the entire state and a nation. What I have for you tonight is, he, yeah, he actually captured the attention and heart of Congressman Garamendi. Congressman Garamendi, from the House floor, on May 7th, when he had his first win, he spoke about your story and the story of the horse. And so I have an official transcript from that. I'm pretty sure he's the only horse in our district to make it into the Library of Congress. So I want you to have this as a keep-stake. Thank you so much again.
We're gonna take a very short recess for the next half hour. And we've got cake outside that we're gonna have you both do the honors and cut the cake for us. And then we've got some refreshments. And I would encourage each and every one of you to come and join us outside. And if you get a chance, come and visit with the Martins one-on-one. So this is our way of saying thank you to each and every one of you who helped out, and especially our sponsors. We could have not done it without you guys. So thank you guys very, very much. And again, appreciate you guys taking the time out to be here today with us and being able to recognize the both of you for a wonderful contribution you've done, not only for this community, but for the state and national and international. It was kind of exciting. I know we were talking in the room that you were getting 150 phone calls. And it was kind of nice for ourselves to get Uba City on the recognition. We knew we were making it very big when Al Jazeera wanted to do live interviews back to New York. So, yeah, so I was fortunate enough to go do that. And we tried to get as much recognition as we can. And we're very, very glad that at least, you know, we're able to recognize you, both of you, for all your hard work that you've done for us. So thank you very, very much, and we're gonna be having cake outside. Okay, good evening. We're gonna go ahead and resume our regularly scheduled city council meeting with a little brief recess there. Item number two, public hearings update from city's development impact fees to include animal shelter fees as part of the community facilities component. Mr. Aaron Bush?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is a item resolution for your consideration tonight. This story began in November of 2011 when the city council agreed to be part of the Joint Powers Authority for the Animal Services, Joint Powers Authority. As part of that agreement, it was aimed for coordinated animal services, facilities, and operations, which also included the construction of an animal shelter facility here in Uba City. On February of 2012, the SASSA board approved the plans and specs for the project, and construction began in October of 2012. It concluded with the opening of a new facility in Uba City in October of 2013. As part of the funding for that, the city agreed to contribute over, just over $4 million for the construction of that facility. And half of the monies that were used to fund that were from the city's Development and Impact Fee program. Now that that facility is open and operating and that the city is incurring costs for that, we believe that it's appropriate to go ahead and adopt a new component or an update for the city's development impact fees, and that would be an animal shelter facility fee. So using the numbers that were used to construct that facility, we're recommending in the attachment one that 50% of the city's $4 million investment would be recuperated through development impact fees. And so when you go through and use the methodology that was used in our original 2006 impact fee calculations and study, you essentially end up with a fee of about $105 per single-family unit. So this does require approval of a resolution to amend our impact fee program and does require a public hearing, which is before you tonight. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council members before I open it up for a public hearing? Okay, seeing none, so I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for a public hearing. I do have a speaker card from Deborah Gaylord to speak on this item. Deborah, if I can go to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
I'm Deborah Gaylord. I live at 615 Downey Street in Uba City. And I'm opposed to any increase in builder impact fees because they increase the cost to build homes and then they increase the cost to purchase homes. Locals in the housing industry have been struggling since the bubble burst, and the city of Uba City should not do anything to delay or hinder the recovery of the housing sector. The new sec, the new shelter hasn't been open very long, and the supposed need for a new fee should have been talked about during the process of negotiations for that shelter. And management should have known these costs prior to breaking down on the shelter. I am just totally opposed to this fee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on the item? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna go and close the public hearing. I'm gonna bring it back to the council for their discussion. There's no discussion?
I'll, I'll move the recommendation.
Do you have a motion?
I'll second that.
I have a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Item number three on the agenda is Uba City Landscape Maintenance District One, Stable Lane, Garden Highway area, Uba City Lighting and Landscape Maintenance District, number two, three, four, and five. Town center and 69 subdivisions through Uba City and Uba City Lighting and Landscape Maintenance District, number six. Commercial District Resolution Confirming Diagram and Assessment and Levying the Assessment. On this particular item, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Vice Mayor Dukes, since I live in one of those districts along
As do I, Mr. Mayor, so I'll recuse myself.
Use ourselves for any further discussion. All right, we'll wait till they leave the room. All right, Diana, may we have the staff report, please?
Good evening. The item tonight is the Resolution Confirming Diagram and Assessment to levy the assessments for the lighting landscape maintenance districts. Annually, the city confirms the diagram and assessments, and these assessments were, were approved by the property owners at the time that the districts were established. The majority of the assessments are staying somewhat the same. For District Five, we actually have a decrease in assessments. And so this pays for ongoing landscape maintenance and streetlight maintenance within the subdivisions that are part of these assessments. With that, I'm, recommendation is to conduct a public hearing, and after consideration of the item, adopt the Resolution Confirming the Diagram and Assessment to levy the assessment for fiscal year 2014, 15.
All right, thank you. Any questions of staff from the council? All right, at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Invite anyone who'd like to speak on this item to step to the podium. Guess there's no mad dash, so we'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to the council for consideration.
Good morning, Vice Mayor. I would like to move to proof.
All right, have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Seeing none, motion carries. We'll bring them back into the room and move on to item number four.
They don't want to come back. They opened bottle of wine and this.
I see. Hopefully you guys didn't increase our fees on us, did you?
We doubled yours.
Item number four, Uba City Residential Street Light Maintenance Districts Walton area and Turbwin area.
These two maintenance districts were established while these areas were within the Sutter County. So when the city annexed the, these areas, the residential streetlight maintenance districts transferred to the city. And similar to the last item, we're requesting adoption of a Resolution Confirming Diagram and Assessment. For the Walton Residential Streetlight District, they're pretty much staying the same. They're decreasing by a few cents. And then for the Turbwin Residential Streetlight District, we are proposing no modifications for this fiscal year. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Diana? Okay, if not, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for a public hearing. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item can do so by going to the podium, stating their name, seeing that there's no mad rush to the podium. I'm gonna go ahead and close this item and bring it back to the council for their recommendation.
Good morning, move to proof.
Okay, we've got a motion?
Second.
And a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next item up is ordinances. Ordnance prohibiting aggressive and unsafe panhandling within the corporate city limits of Uba City, presented by Chief Rob Landon.
Good evening, Mayor Gill, Vice Mayor Dukes, council members. We're here today to introduce an ordinance prohibiting aggressive and unsafe panhandling within the corporate city limits of Uba City, as the mayor just described. I want to, first of all, start out with the purpose of why we're doing this. The purpose and intent of introducing an ordinance prohibiting aggressive and unsafe panhandling is to protect the safety and welfare of the general public and improve the quality of life and economic vitality of the city of the Uba City by imposing reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions on aggressive, intrusive, or unsafe panhandling while respecting the constitutional rights of everybody. So historically, the right to solicit donations, whether for oneself or for others, is constitutionally protected under the First Amendment of the Constitution of the United States. The city of Uba City has experienced a marked increase in the amount of persons soliciting donations throughout the city. We've had an increase of numerous complaints from businesses and private citizens about unsafe practices of the person soliciting to include numerous complaints of aggressive and intrusive, excuse me, solicitation. Staff along with the city council researched several ordinances throughout Northern California area, which had experienced similar problems with aggressive and unsafe panhandling. We looked at, we took the best parts out of certain ones, and we found there's a lot of local places that have done it, Roseville, Sacramento, Santa Cruz, County of Sacramento, just a lot of different ordinances that we were able to glean their information from. The city attorney also researched recent case laws that are similar in content during the course of preparing the proposed ordinances to look at the stumbling blocks that have been faced. Courts have upheld ordinances that have put limitations on certain acts of solicitation or panhandling where the regulations are narrowly tailored to address problems so long as the ordinance does not ban all opportunities for solicitation. The courts have also struck down a number of panhandling ordinances that went too far and attempted what the, to regulate what the court determined was protected speech. So we're trying to strike a balance between that with our ordinance. We feel the current proposed ordinance is timely and appropriate because current laws and city regulations are insufficient to address the aforementioned problems. The restrictions contained in the proposed ordinance are neither overbroad nor vague, and they are narrowly tailored to serve a substantial government interest. The goal of this law is to protect citizens from the fear and intimidation accompanying certain kinds of panhandling that have become an unwelcome presence in the city and to protect the safety of the general public. So I'm gonna go through the ordinance itself instead of reading all the whereof, for's, and why's and stuff. First of all, there's two different parts of this. There's the unsafe, and then there's the aggressive panhandling. All panhandling is all, no person shall panhandle in an aggressive and intrusive manner in any public place. And we have a specific definition in here of what constitutes aggressive and intrusive panhandling. It's conduct intended to likely, or likely to cause a reasonable person to fear bodily harm to oneself or another, to fear damage to or loss of property, or otherwise to be intimidated into giving money or other thing of value. Intentionally touching or causing physical contact with another person or an occupied vehicle without that person's consent. Persisting and closely following or approaching a person after the person has informed a panhandler that such person does not want to be panhandled or does not want to give them money or any other thing of value to the panhandler. Using violent or threatening gestures towards a person or using profane, offensive, or abusive language that is inherently likely to provoke immediate action either before, during, or after panhandling. So that's one part of it. That's the aggressive or the intrusive panhandling. And then we go into the areas of unsafe panhandling. First, we have financial institutions and automated teller machines. You're basically in a closed confined area, and you obviously are getting cash out that can create issues and make you feel uncomfortable. Motor vehicles, no person shall panhandle from an operator or occupant traveling in a motor vehicle while such vehicle is located within 100 feet of any intersection in which at least one corner is controlled by an official traffic signal with type set four. In which at least one corner is controlled by an official traffic signal with type set fourth California vehicle called twenty four, twenty one four fifty. Which is basically a stoplight. So you can't panhandle within a hundred feet. The reasoning behind that is you're obstructing traffic. You're detracting from what the driver's responsibility is, which is to maintain um safe driving. And you're also doing it a place where there's pedestrians likely to cross and come into contact. So if you're not paying attention, similar to what texting is. You're getting your attention away from what the driver's supposed to be doing. Medium strips, although we're covering that, that's also covered in about the California Vehicle Code. No person shall panhandle on a medium strip in any manner or location that is inconsistent with provisions of California Vehicle Code. Driveways accessing shopping centers, retail and business establishments. No person shall panhandle from an operator occupant traveling in a motor vehicle while such vehicle. Is located within thirty five feet of a driveway providing vehicular access to a shopping center, retail or business establishments. I'm sure if you guys drive through Walmart or some of the other locations that have people waving their signs right by a uh an intersection. It's detracting from what they're trying to do again and you can't see people coming or going. You can't see traffic coming or going. You have a primary responsibility when you are a driver and that's to drive that vehicle safely. Public transportation vehicles and stops, no person shall panhandle in any public transportation vehicle. Or than fifty feet of any designated or posted public transportation vehicle stop. Again, what's happening with that and gasoline stations and fuel pumps which are covered is you're talking to a captured audience. This person isn't allowed to leave. He's there for one reason, which is to get from his destination to the next. So. He doesn't ha- he or she should not have to be part of that. Same with the gas station, you're there for one reason, which is to get your gas and to be stopped. While you're, while you can't leave and you can't walk away. Again, that restricts their their constitutional rights. No person shall panhandle in any place after dark. And this section is not violated if a person is panhandling, is doing so on private property. That is open to the public and with the express authorization of the owner, manager, supervisor at the business operating at the property. And then for the first infraction, or first the penalty for any of these infraction or. Ordinance violations is an infraction. The second or subsequent ones in a six month period shall be guilty of a misdemeanor. With that, I will turn it over to the mayor for the public hearing.
Any questions uh for the chief and the council members?
Yeah, I got a couple. Um through the mayor. How uh obviously you've done the research and this is enforceable. The penalties seem like slap on the hand. What uh what do we have? Somebody gets their hand slapped once, then what's gonna happen?
The first one is a infraction, the second and subsequent ones is misdemeanors which can be uh dealt with with time in jail.
Really? Thank you. Any other questions?
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for a public hearing and anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item. I can do so by going to the podium and stating your name.
Hello, my name is Garrett Chissy. I live at eighteen nineteen Cleo Court here in Yuba City. I'm uh the manager, my boss Bill Fortin is business on Pluma Street. I were a member of the Downtown Business Association, um Twin Rivers Polaris. Uh we wanted to come show our support of this ordinance. Um. It's, everybody who's been downtown has experienced this. It's it's pretty obvious like nobody's really. I think real floored by this. Um it's kind of a shame, I think, because we've spent so much money in improving that downtown area. Over the past few years, we've partaked in the um some of the money and the funds that you guys have made available for us. Um but on the other side, I think there's a greater issue here. Um with the vagrants and I think that needs to be addressed as well and I think we need to bring up another ordinance as well with that. Um for us, we felt uh it was a big, the a big issue is the school. There's a school across the street. I I can tell you almost on a monthly basis, I see somebody nude. Close to a school inside of these children. I see drugs. I see people yelling at people. I see people fighting. I see people beating women. I see, I have to break up fights. I have to do all these things and it's right inside of the school, which is a. To me, a big thing for this community. On a personal level, it affects my business every day. I'm talking to a customer about a large purchase and they get come, they, somebody comes up and either panhandles them or just harasses them. Touches them, steals from them. It's just, it's it's becoming a huge issue for us. I have a couple examples here. I mean, people just talking to themselves, people. My employees getting things stolen. I've got, I put a surveillance system up to try to. Help prevent things like this happening and my cameras are stolen off the walls. I mean, it's 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 ridiculous. Another thing I think needs to be brought up is the um, there's a a nice piece of property the city owns. Allowed to keep going, how's this work? Thank you. Um so there's a large piece of property the city owns. Uh um I think it's on the corner of Shasta and Bridge Street. Great piece of property. There's been talk of, you know, doing stuff with it for years. And I think somebody, any business person, I know from my perspective, I I'm a, you know, a young punk kid here, but. Uh from my perspective, I think it'd be crazy to do something like that. I think I'd be crazy to invest a lot of money in a place like that because. Why would I wanna do that when I'm gonna have to have my customers, I've had customers tell me, I'm not coming back. Because of what's happened at your business, because of these people coming by and harassing me, stealing from me. I've had employees. I've had to compensate employees because of this, because they've got things stolen and I've seen it on camera happen. It's just, it's becoming a huge, huge issue and I think it needs to be addressed sooner than later. I get to keep going, this is just.
Yeah, if you can wrap it up.
I'm pretty much done. I did bring some pictures for you guys, in case you'd like to see. A couple pictures of.
Just hand them over to Terrell and she'll pass them over to us.
Some pictures that, I brought a couple. I didn't wanna go too crazy, but kinda give you guys an idea of the stuff we see on databases.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Mr. Jimmerson?
Thank you, Rick Jimmerson, uh Oswald Road. And uh on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, I'm wanting to thank all of you for consideration on this ordinance. It's a much needed ordinance. As you've just heard, it could be expanded uh perhaps to do a little bit more. But we're very happy as uh not only business people within the community, but as citizens of the community, to know that you're working and moving forward. On addressing an issue that really needs to be taken care of. So just on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jimmerson. Anyone else? Cindy, come on up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Hi there, I'm Cindy Payne, six seven five Almond Street, Yuba City. We own two businesses, Downtown Jerry's Stereo and the Tea Garden House. I agree completely with what Garrett says. We really do appreciate that you guys are working on an ordinance. But we do need an additional ordinance of some type for the vagrants. It's getting really bad. A lot of business or people are getting scared off. If you walk down Pluma Street, it's. It's kind of, you never know who you're gonna see. It's kinda scares people off that if they're going into Cash's place. Or Fo-teen's place to have lunch or buy something. And you have people following you or they're talking to themselves out loud. And I mean, I totally understand homelessness and mental illness. More than a lot of people do and I have empathy for them. But we need to be more aggressive, maybe try to find somewhere, work with some of these churches or organizations. To find somewhere for them to be other than our area downtown. Um or any business area, not just downtown, but that's where the city spent a lot of money. So anyway, thank you guys for listening.
Thank you.
Miles Johnson, three two two North Oliver Drive, Yuba City. Honorable mayor, members of council. First of all, I'd like to um uh express my appreciation uh for this chief and putting together such a comprehensive document. Tonight, I'm representing the uh Yuba Sutter Homeless, Homeless Consortium. Uh we had an opportunity to review the document. And based on discussions I've had with the board, there was nothing really glaring. That really str- struck out at the board. So given that, I think the board is in support of this, of this document. But um but I was cautioned to to share that with any policy. Uh what the tire meets the road is the implementation. And as uh and as you implement this policy, the board wanted me to share with you to understand that you're still dealing with someone's son. A daughter, cousin, a friend. And the humanity that comes along with being a part of of uh this community. Now, taking that hat off and putting on my citizen hat. I noticed that uh when I was reading through the policy, that it, it didn't differentiate between. Um uh aggressive panhandling. And say for instance, like um I don't know, Girl Scouts. Or uh cheerleader squad. Or even the fire department. Uh collecting my, how is, how, how? Explain to me, or if you can, how that, how? Because to me, that this ordinance is really put restrictions on all of that behavior.
Miles, what we'll do is we'll pick all the questions and if there's additional questions later on, then we'll get chief to answer them all at one point in time versus going back and forth. Uh is there anybody else from the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Okay?
There you go, chief's up.
Chief, you're up.
I appreciate hearing all the different perspectives it does uh and we are very aware of the the fact that we are dealing with people's sons and families, so. We always take that to heart and I appreciate you bringing that up, Miles. You want me to address the question that Mr. Johnson had?
Yes, please.
The uh question about the charities, um. Right now, it doesn't differentiate between them because we are talking about unsafe practices. When we're talking about being by a roadway, when we're talking about at the entrance of a shopping center, it doesn't differentiate between a charity. And a panhandler and there's a couple reasons why we didn't specifically address that. Number one, there's currently currently a case going in front of the uh, actually, I don't know who it's going in front of, but it's the ACLU is challenging the county of Sacramento. And the reason they did that, because they made an exclusion for the charity. So at this point in time, we feel it's prudent not to uh separate them until we have a final court decision back. On the Sacramento decision.
Great. Okay, uh any other questions? If not, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public comment and bring it back to the council for their comments and discussion.
As a mayor, I'd like to propose the recommendation.
Okay, I'm sure we got a couple of comments, but let's get a motion.
I'll second.
A second. Uh we have additional comments?
Through the mayor.
Yes.
I think that the ordinance is a uh starting point for our community uh to start addressing. An issue as Miles said that uh does affect a number of different families uh within our community. Uh these are someone's either parent, children. Um but we do have individuals that come to Yuba City uh expressly for. Extra services. Uh we hear and talk to individuals that have come here from the Bay Area. Because uh there is aggressive enforcement that occurs in the Bay Area. Um San Jose, I've talked to a gentleman from San Jose that showed up here and is actually living uh down in the river bottoms. Uh just to the south of Yuba City. And came here because he had heard through the homeless grapevine. And I would caution the use of the word homeless. Cause this person appeared to be more of a vagrant than a homeless individual. Um constantly intoxicated, using drugs, the mental illness is probably was driven. Um is, I mean, I'm not an expert at at mental illness. I'm certain it's probably driven uh somewhat from the drug use uh that this person goes through. Uh homelessness and vagrancy, I think, need to be continually separated within our community. We need to address the crime ridden vagrancy. We need to be more aggressive in that. Uh especially in our downtown area. Uh our businesses are, there there's a constant issue with sanitation. For businesses, what people do in doorways is unspeakable. What people do on walls, what people do behind in an alleys, um is a disgrace to our community. And we need to address that. There are a number of of cities that have uh effective programs, San Antonio, Texas, Raleigh. And Portland all have pieces that I think we need to continue to look at. And we will continue to look at to, to once again follow this first step. I think that the uh implementation, uh the plan that that has been set forward is good. I think the enforcement is going to be key uh to what we're seeing currently. And I do think that as a, as a community, this is a giving community and that has created some of the problems. Um that happen and have and continue to be promoted through those. Um I know that the Twin City, you know, the Polaris dealership sits right next to a feeding program. This is an area that that uh constantly has a hundred and fifty, hundred and sixty people showing up. Twice a week for lunches. It's a great concept. It's the wrong part of our city. And I think we need to continue to address that. And uh if they live in the river or they live by the river bottom area. We need to locate their feeding uh grounds to a different location than in the middle of our city. Uh where they continue to uh prey on the citizens that continually try to support our downtown area. I support this um from the standpoint that I think it's a first step.
I agree with that. First of all, chief, thank you very much for bringing this uh ordinance to the council. Um you gotta remember that this is the first ordinance. We don't, we didn't have an ordinance prior to this being written. So you can't enforce something that you don't have. This may not be the perfect ordinance at this point in time, but it's a great ordinance uh to get the ball rolling. Uh this is a great first step uh for this particular ordinance. Now that there's an ordinance in place, obviously now you can impose fines and penalties to do this. And moving forward, you can build upon this ordinance with the input from the community as needs go forward. So great job to you, chief, for putting this together.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments from the council members? If not?
I would just say I'm just in agreement with Councilman Buckland saying it's uh. We all feel for the people. I mean, uh as Miles said, they're human beings, but. And it's a tough issue we we face all over the world and all over the country, but uh we've done. Businesses are uh are doing a lot to make their places nice and making them welcoming and and uh. When you have something like that going on in in front of your business or next door to you, it makes it difficult and uh. Think feeding sites, they create a lot of problems. You see it in Sacramento, you see it in San Francisco and and we're seeing it in in on Pluma Street. Uh the sites, really uh the churches are doing a great, trying to do a good job, but I think if we could locate those. Uh possibly going over to the river bottoms and feeding there. Um that that would go a long way. Uh I think this is a great attempt. Uh try and please, chief, did a great job coming up with this and I think it's gonna be fine tuning. And uh let's give this a try and uh and improve upon this.
Wonderful. I've got a motion in a second.
I'd just like to make comment also. Councilmember uh Buckland made a comment regarding regarding the difference between homeless and and vagrancy and I think that. This yes is a good first step and I think that we need to further define what that means in our community and what this community is willing. To stand behind and and I think most of us on the council would agree that helping people that are truly homeless. And need a hand up are willing to do that, but vagrancy is something that we are not going to support and enable in this community. And so this is the first step towards getting to that and identifying what those, what those individuals, what that looks like in our community. And how we want to handle this, so thank you. Uh and I don't possibly think I could add anything more than these fine gentlemen have said, so I'll call for the question.
Wonderful. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Wonderful, motion carries. Thank you, chief. Next. Next up is uh public communication. Uh you're welcome, encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Item number six is written requests. Members of the public submitting written requests at least twenty four hours prior to the meeting. Will normally be allotted five minutes to speak. Terrell, do we have any written requests?
We have not received any written requests.
Wonderful. Number seven is appearance of interest to citizens. Members of the public may address the city council items of interest. That are within the city's jurisdiction. Individuals addressing general comments are encouraged to limit their statements to three minutes. That are within the city's jurisdiction, individuals addressing general comments are encouraged to limit their statements to three minutes. Anyone from the public? Yes, come on right up, Stephanie, you have three minutes.
Three minutes.
Three minutes.
Alright, I'm Stephanie Ressino, I live at sixteen sixty Sharon Drive in Yuba City. And in one month from now. It will be National POW MIA Remembrance Day. And I'd like you not to think just a Bo Berg Dahlde sergeant. Who may or may not have been a traitor. Who five prisoners from Gitmo were traded for. I would like you to think of the two thousand six hundred and forty six men and women. Who are missing from previous wars, unaccounted for. That's two thousand six hundred and forty six families. Who don't know what happened to their loved one, have no clue. All they knew is they took an oath to defend the United States and they're gone. And it's hard not having closure. And that's what I'd like you to think about. And my group, we're gonna be putting some kind of a remembrance together and we'd like to partner with others just to remember those men. One of them is a rare admiral, Bob Shoemaker. I have personal knowledge because his wife Lorraine and my mother were best friends. He spent eight years as a POW. The first four and a half she didn't know was a propaganda film. He gives inspirational speeches throughout the US and he'll be coming to our area as a favor to my mom. So I, with that said, I'd like to offer these posters, they're hot off the press. Right now, we're the only area in California that has these. The rest of them have to wait for two weeks before they come out. We have them now and I'm not saying I took more than the two that was allotted me at the conference down in Vegas with the ambassador there. But let's just say might makes right.
Thank you, Stephanie.
And I would like, I would like the city, if they would.
Sure.
Uh by the way, in as far as the numbers are concerned, of that two thousand six hundred and forty six that are missing. One thousand five hundred and fifty five were from the Vietnam War. Four hundred and fifty five from Laos. Seventy five Cambodia, eight in the Chinese waters and the other five hundred from the previous Korea and Second World War. Which are still unaccounted for, but because of the age, they're not actively looking, but they're always seeking information. And just think of those two thousand six hundred and forty six families. Maybe a little prayer, a little remembrance, because no one wants to be forgotten. And that's all I wanna say is one month to think about them and let's do something to never forget them. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on items that are not on the agenda? Okay, I'm gonna move on to the consent calendar, all matters listed in the consent calendar considering be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that the council votes on motions unless members of the city council staff or public request specific items to be discussed or moved. From the consent calendar for individual action, might go ahead and pull item number eleven out of there. Uh cause we do have a question on that particular item, so we're asking for a a motion approval on eight, nine and ten.
Through the mayor. I will move for approval of the consent counter eight, nine and ten.
Yes. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye. Uh motion carries. Uh item number eleven, Deborah, you have a wish to come and speak on item number eleven.
Yeah, the city wants to purchase a piece, a parcel of property because it. Purchasing that property will make their property that the city already owns more marketable. And I don't think that the city should be competing with the public for the purchase of land. It should not be pe- competing with private companies that. Develop pro- develop land and build. Not that the city is, I know the city does not intend to build at this time. Um but the city should not be purchasing real estate and speculating because and. For instance, the city of Marysville did that with the property they own on B Street in Marysville. And they're in a real bad situation, they will never break even on that on that deal. Real estate specu- real estate subdivision speculation is very, very risky and I don't think the city should be doing it. And even if it turns out to be profitable, the profits shouldn't go to the government, it should be private. Companies, private entrepreneurs. Doing this kind of work. Um I'm not sure that the property that you wanna buy is. That I think the sales price may be too high. And um I I just don't, I I would prefer that the city of Yuba City does not get into the. Buying and selling of real estate and making money on it. Uh it seems like there might be a bit of a trend, looking at other agenda items that are on the agenda that one of which I know is being pulled. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, Diana, do you wanna comment on that?
Sure, the parcel uh that we're proposing to purchase is a twenty foot wide strip. That's necessary to provide access to Providence Court to the south, which is the city owned property to the south. In addition, as a standalone piece of property with it only being twenty foot wide, it's not something that could be developed as a um as a lot in its own. And so that's why the city is proposing to purchase it, to combine it with the city owned parcel to the south. So that we can have access to Providence Court and then with that make legal sized lots by joining it with our property.
Thank you. Okay.
For for Diana. The S word came out um that we were speculating, can you uh at least give us a little bit of background? Uh on how we came about the lots um that are currently in the city's possession?
Yes, Dunmore Homes, when they uh subdivided. Those properties up there creating the Canterbury subdivision. Um the, there was an agreement with Dunmore that they would actually build and expand the pond on the east side of Clark Avenue. And in exchange, the parcel that the city owns was a detention basin. At the time that the new detention basin was constructed, the old detention basin was to be abandoned and that property was to go to Dunmore Homes. When Dunmore Homes uh went into default and bankrupted. They had uh, we had the pond already on the uh east side of Clark Avenue. Um but we kept the property on the west side of Clark Avenue. So it's property that was supposed to go to Dunmore because they went into bankruptcy, we were able to retain the property.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Yes.
So the property was originally dedicated to the city through a previous subdivision as detention basin. Um we were supposed to then transfer it to Dunmore because they went bankrupt, we were able to retain it. Correct, we don't have the legal right right now to cross that property to get to Providence Court.
And I think like Diana said, you cannot build houses on that strip of land. So, okay.
Therefore, through the mayor.
Yes.
Uh thank you Diana for that. Description and I'll move the recommendation.
Okay, my motion.
I'll second it.
Second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you. Item number twelve is general items, two thousand fourteen Economic Development Work Plan, Mr. Darren Gale. See that you've got pretty much most of your economic development commissioners here.
Yes, uh good evening, uh Mayor Gill and councilmembers, uh Darren Gale, Economic Development Manager and uh. At first, I'd like to introduce uh the chairman of our Economic Development Commission, uh Greg Heckman for River Valley Community Bank. Uh we are very lucky uh at the city that we have six. Uh members of an Economic Development Commission that are willing to give up their time and serve and be advisors to the councils. On economic development policy, we have a chairman Heckman, we have uh Christine Ivory from Pacific Coast Producers.
Please raise your hand so we can see you all, thank you.
Uh we have Ivan Rhine, which works for State Energy Commission. Uh Mr. Burrow, who's a local realtor, homes by Dave. And Nancy Augberg, our superintendent of schools for Yuba City School District. At this time, I'd like to uh turn the time over to uh our chairman.
Good evening, I'm uh Greg Heckman, uh chairman of the Economic Development Commission, let me say first of all, it's a. Honor and privilege to serve on the commission. Uh thank you to members of the city council for uh setting this up and allowing us to serve. Um uh my my comments will be very brief, um you have as part of your packet a recommendation that was the. Culmination uh of a lot of people's input. Um a wide diversification of twenty twenty five people with a series of workshops to update. Uh the economic development plan that was originally developed in two thousand eight. Uh through the collaboration of Aubrey Chabon, who's done a very, very fine job, I think, in coordinating this whole thing. And I'll just say that it isn't, for me, it isn't the content of the report that's important, it's the uh it's the basis and the uh. Machinations for which it occurs to allow the members of the public and uh key individuals from a wide diversified field in the city to be able to give their input into the. The betterment of the city, so for that, I thank you very much.
So um as a, as part of the plan is was mentioned, Audrey Chabon from uh Aubrey. Um Taylor from Chabon Concepts uh once again helped uh put together our economic development plan. Uh the council back in two thousand and eight uh used Chabon Concepts to help. Uh establish really our first economic development work plan, you adopted a work plan. Uh appointed an economic development commission and set aside a budget for um for economic development. This is a recent picture maybe you've seen by a uh Mr. Mark Ant- uh Mark Anthony Carter. And he uh recently took this photo, I just think it just shows what a great community we live in and a great perspective. Um. I wa- I wanna talk a little bit about the past, um the plan that we had is about uh five and a half, six years old. And it and the city council and the Economic Development Commission has successfully implemented that plan. And and just a few of the things I wanted to talk about, one, business retention and expansion. That is the most important part that we can do with our business community and we have implemented a business retention expansion program. Uh we've also been awarded um just here a year and a half ago for our adopted business program with our department heads to reach out. And build relationships. Um also, we've worked on gateway enhancements, which which was a big part of the original. A plan, the Yuba College Campus here in Yuba City. And the Kingsbury Project is a great example of the city's economic development efforts. So uh the stakeholders group, I've already uh went through that, uh three meetings. Uh and the Economic Development Commission is recommending approval of the work plan. Uh the work plan is now not called economic development, uh it's called Grow Our Economy. Uh your council adopted a new uh goals, updated it and you and you use the wording of grow our economy. And and I I love the wording because it it really goes outside of a department at at the city. Or an organization within the community, it's really an effort that all of us uh can be a part of in helping grow our our economy. Uh and there's three goals that came out of this uh work uh session. I grow our image, grow our businesses and grow our people. Um which the other part I like about it is just the the wording, right, we're we're an agricultural hub. And and the use of the of the word uh grow. Uh one of the uh the the new parts of this work plan that Audrey uh helped put us put together. Is we actually have an implementation plan where we have specific items uh mentioned. So we have a work plan, an implementation plan, in that workman- implementation plan. We don't work, the Economic Development Commission will start setting the priorities. Who is, who is the point person on this, it might be a commissioner, it might be myself, it might be another organization in the community. And then how over the next five years will we implement that that plan? Short term, you know, medium term and a long term goal. Uh again, I just want to uh thank all those who participated and helped putting together the economic development plan. Um Todd Reiman is the only other uh a member of the Economic Development Commission that's not here. Uh maybe we should uh change their name later to Grow Our Economy, Grow Our Economy Commission. Which a better truly um I think uh describes the effort of of the city. The commission and our business community, uh as a group, we wanna see these things uh uh grow. Our image, our businesses and our people, and I can answer any questions that you might have.
Questions from Mr. Gale from councilmembers. You're off the hook, no questions for you.
I had the opportunity to attend uh one of the meetings this year and it was really. Uh impressive to see the quality of people that were involved in this project and the ideas they came up with, so I commend you, thank you. I commend the commissioner.
Absolutely, and I too was able to attend those with, I think. Councilmember Stark and myself were the two councilmembers uh appointed to that committee and. I was able to see the great input from the community and see what they wanted, uh community members along with our commission, so. I know it takes a lot of hours from your personal work uh to volunteer this time. Uh so to the commission and to our community members who were out there, I wanna say thank you for taking your time out. And uh trying to make our economy grow and uh make it a better place than it was. So with that, uh and I have a recommendation to adopt the work plan and associated.
Since I was appointed, it'd probably be unethical of me to recommend my own committee's thing, so I'll let somebody else do. I will move for approval.
I got a motion. Second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you very much. Item number thirteen is being pulled uh from the agenda today. We brought back at a later date. Item number fourteen is specific gas and electric informational overview of the pipeline safety program. Diana.
Good evening, Joe Wilson with PG&E is here tonight to present um an overview of PG&E's pipeline safety program. Joe, would you like to come on?
Thank you Diana and thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Joe Wilson, I'm the governmental relations rep for PG&E for the northern part of our service territory. And this evening, I'm happy to be able to present PG&E's Pipeline Safety Program. At PG&E, our number one responsibility is to ensure the safety of the public. As we deliver clean and efficient energy to over half of California. The program that I'm gonna be briefing the council on this evening focuses on our high pressure gas transmission lines. Thank you. As you can see from the agenda, what we'll do is we'll look at the pipeline safety initiatives, introduce the program. Talk about how we're working collaboratively with our customers as well as municipalities. Review the ways that we're communicating with our customers and then we'll discuss replacement and restoration options. Over the last four years, we've accomplished a lot of work in terms of replacing our gas pi- transmission pipeline that has been antiquated. Uh testing and validating the strength of existing pipelines through hydrostatic pressure testing, in fact, I remember seeing Councilman Buckland at one of our open houses about a year ago. Here in Yuba City, as well as installing new automated valves in areas that have high population densities. So while we continue to make progress along in those areas to make our gas transition transmission system safe. We also realize we have an obligation to ensure that the high pressure transmission mains stay safe. So in two thousand thirteen, we launched a program called Pipeline Pathways. And what this program did was it used GPS technology to with very precise accuracy pinpoint. The center line of all six thousand seven hundred and fifty miles of our gas transmission line. We placed new markers over the pipelines, so not only PG&E employees, but members of the public could clearly identify that, hey, there's a gas transmission line there. And no doubt, um you've seen those orange and white striped paddle markers as you've driven around the area. The third component of this program is we've worked collaboratively with cities and counties as well as our customers. To identify conflicts that are located either on top of or adjacent to the pipeline that could present a safety issue. Some of the conflicts that were identified included structures that were built on top of the gas line or in the utility easement. As well as materials that were stored in the easements. Some areas, it was a log deck that was placed over the gas uh transmission line or gravel construction materials. Other conflicts that we identified included trees and bushes that have woody root structures. That can wrap their roots around the pipeline and cause potential stress and corrosion. So our program's goal is to ensure that our system and the public stays safe by removing the conflicts that are ten feet from the center line of the pipe. On both sides or less and then replacing the trees or. and then replacing the trees or bushes that are removed in an alternate location that doesn't present a conflict. Well, Pipeline Information and Informed Planning Alliance, or PIPA, is an industry group. They issued a report in two thousand and ten that detailed the best practices for gas transmission operators. And that's what we're working to accomplish as a company, is we want to bring our operations into line with industry best practices. As a company, we wanted to see some solid data about the potential impacts of tree roots specifically. So we commissioned a scientific study with Fresno State. And the results of the Fresno State study were very surprising. In fact, in seventy-five percent of the instances, when tree roots had significant contact with the pipeline, it presented a higher risk of corrosion and it could damage the external protective coating of that steel pipeline. Of course, all of us have seen trees that are blown over in storms, especially, well, maybe not last winter, but in most winters, we'll get a lot of rain, some high winds, and trees will sometimes blow over. If a tree had its roots wrapped around a pipeline just like this, and it did blow over, it could cause catastrophic structural damage to the pipeline. So if the key word to this program is safety, the next key words would be collaboration and then communication. When we identify a conflict that presents a safety issue, first of all, we reach out to the local agency, Yuba City in this instance. Then we'll reach out to property owners who live within a five-hundred-foot radius. Our communication includes letters and telephone calls to property owners, and before any work is done, we'll have a signed agreement with the municipality or the property owner to remove that conflict. We anticipate beginning some of our telephone calls to our customers in the Yuba City area in the next week or so. As shown on this map, in the dark blue lines, PG&E has approximately twenty miles of high-pressure gas line in Yuba City. And the green highlighted sections are areas that we've identified conflicts. So it's not the entire city, but it is spread across different sections. So again, when we identify these conflicts, we have a process where we kind of analyze the threat level. So in each of these areas, we've identified approximately about a hundred city-owned trees and right around a little over two hundred private property trees. And some of them, in fact, the vast majority of them are six inches or smaller, fairly young. So what we do is we will go ahead and kind of rate what the threat level is to that particular conflict. And there are different factors that come into play in terms of distance to the pipeline, types of soils, type of pipeline, pressure of pipeline, wind load, all sorts of different things that we will go ahead and look at before we make the decision to go ahead and work with the property owner to remove that that conflict. Other areas that we're also working on is we're working with city staff, including the city manager, Mr. Krieger. I know we've had a number of telephone calls and several meetings with him, as well as the Public Works Director, to ensure that any removal or restoration work that happens in city-owned franchise areas is done in compliance with city standards and as well as our restoration plan. One of the things that I had mentioned to Mr. Krieger on the phone the other night was we know that, in fact, the last item was the city has your new economic development plan. And one of the things that you had adopted within that plan is to kind of grow your image. We're going to see what we can do to use our restoration options as part of this program to help grow the grow the city's image. And we'll work with city staff to try and see where we can make this program sync up with the city's goals. So when it comes time to remove trees or bushes, again, we'll work with the private property owner to get permission to remove the vegetation. And then we'll restore the area with low-impact grasses, shrubs, mulch or bark, as well as provide at least one replacement tree to be planted in another location that doesn't present a conflict. We take our responsibility to operate our pipelines in a safe manner really seriously. This program is statewide across our entire service area, and it's paid for entirely by shareholder dollars. Our ratepayers aren't covering the cost of this. We want to make sure this program is done right. We want to make sure that our pipeline is safe and that the community is safe as well. And to accomplish that goal, it's going to require frequent communication with the city, the council, the staff, as well as our customers. I know that my time's limited this evening, and you guys have had a long meeting already, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have. In conclusion, thank you for allowing me the time to present PG&E's pipeline safety program.
Thank you. I'm sure we've got quite a few questions, but I'll let the vice mayor go first.
All right, Joe, on that map, it showed, I think, Queens Avenue was was one of the areas where there were trees that perhaps would be invasive. And we've got quite a large canopy of trees there. What can be done to protect that canopy of trees? Are we looking at maybe moving the pipelines? Or how how would we deal with a situation like that?
So that's a great question. That's actually one of the areas that the city manager and Public Works Director brought up. And it was one of the areas that we identified early on as we were analyzing the conflicts. So there are things that we can do as we work with the city to mitigate those those removals. In fact, we can do increased pipeline patrols. We can look at how close the trees are to the pipeline and determine the threat level. In this case, we have run that through our model and determined that those trees on Queens Avenue can actually stay. And we will be pursuing those mitigation options.
All right. And then I would like to discuss some other items with you after the meeting, if we can, if you can stick around too, that are not on the agenda today. Thank you.
Other questions?
I meant to infer that in all likelihood, the movement of a gas line is probably not going to happen in most cases.
Most cases, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just had a question. You guys did some major repairs up in the Loma Crossing area as well, just recently, just finished that up. Was that basically due to same thing that you're seeing here is the pipeline needed some major repairs there? Was that one of the hot green spots that you had there?
Actually, no. These green spots are all conflicts that we've identified, mostly vegetation. The project that you're referring to is a pipeline replacement that we identified the line due to just the age and capacity issues. We went ahead and replaced last year. So that was part of the work that we've been continually doing.
So if this, the green is obviously your vegetation stuff that you have, and you've done your survey, have you provided a list to the city at all as far as what areas that you feel within the city are danger at this point in time, that pipelines that need immediate repair or replacement?
So that's a great question. What we've done is we have given the city a list of all the areas that we've identified. And we communicated to the city Public Works Director that we would be going back through and performing that threat level assessment. And that's what we are actually doing this week. So we will be following back up with the city before any work is done to say, hey, these are the threat levels in these different areas. What do you think? So this is going to be a very collaborative process. We want to make sure that the city is happy as well as PG&E's pipeline is safe.
Great, thank you.
To the mayor?
Yes.
One additional question. Joe, the going forward with new development, what can be done working with the city to prevent planting of of trees that would be invasive to the pipelines and then also to overhead power lines in the city?
That's actually actually a very good question. So part of this program includes education of our customers as well as our agency partners in terms of what is the right tree for the right place. Pretty much everybody knows it's a bad idea to plant a sequoia tree underneath the transmission line.
When it happens.
It does happen. So that's going to be part of our ongoing educational program. And then as we continue our patrols through our easement and along our gas lines, we will identify those conflicts before they get to be too large. Those are all the high-pressure gas transmission lines. That's correct. But those were landscaping shrubs, trees that were put in the wrong spot. So we'll be working with those individual business owners to see what we can do to remove those conflicts and replace them in a different location in accordance with city standards. And we had a conversation with your Public Works Director. We're going to be meeting with the Community Development Agency to make sure that we still meet the shading and screening standards.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, thank you very much. This is just for note and file. Item number fifteen, Chevron Energy Solutions Program Development Report, Energy and Infrastructure Improvement Project, presented by Diana Langley. Diana?
Hello. So the item, this item before you tonight is the Chevron Energy Solutions Program Development Report for an energy and infrastructure improvement project. So in July two thousand and thirteen, Chevron staff approached the city about developing an energy efficiency project for the city. They went through toward the various city facilities. And then in March two thousand and fourteen, the city council authorized the execution of a program development agreement with Chevron to perform an investment-grade audit, design and engineering, competitively bid the project, evaluate grants and incentives, and finalize the financial model. The agreement provided that Chevron would perform the above listed tasks for a fee of twenty-five thousand dollars. If the project was found to be financially viable upon completion of the tasks outlined in the agreement, and the city elected to proceed with the project, the twenty-five thousand dollars would be incorporated into the project cost. If it was determined to be financially viable and we did not elect to proceed with the project, we would need to pay Chevron the twenty-five thousand dollars. In addition, the agreement stated that the project had to be financially viable if over a maximum turn of eighteen years after the implementation of the energy conservation measures, the average annual savings will be a minimum of twenty-five thousand dollars. So tonight, our two, there are two representatives from Chevron here, Ashu Jain and Patrick Yost with a presentation on the proposed project for Yuba City and going over efforts that they did to outreach to local contractors, as well as they've done, presented to us multiple financing options. The item tonight is really to review the project and see if council would like to proceed forward with the project. And then at a future council meeting, we'd come forward with an agreement and propose financial options. So with that, I will, I'm happy to introduce Ashu Jain.
Thank you, Ms. Langley. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmen, staff. Ashu Jain with Chevron Energy Solutions. It gives me great pleasure to be here. We've been, as Ms. Langley mentioned, we've been developing this project along with your staff for the last four or five months. We're quite pleased with what we've come up with, and hopefully you'll agree with us. So before I start, let me introduce Patrick Yost. He's our project manager. He was instrumental in putting this project together. And he'll actually be going through the scope for you. So what this project does for the city is it saves five point seven million dollars over its life after paying for all costs. So this is net savings over project life. And the unique thing about this project is that we're, you know, we are sort of taking care of a lot of problems that the city infrastructure had. Right at City Hall, we're going to completely renovate the air conditioning system, the lighting system. We are doing something with controls for the police department. We are replacing an air compressor at Fire Station One. So these are all items that needed to are needed to be done. And this is a process that we get it all done at the same time. And what that does for the city, of course, it takes care of, saves a lot of administrative time for the city in not having to do this in a piecemeal fashion, which is takes more time, costs more money. We're replacing all the lighting with LED lighting throughout the city, indoor and outdoor. And that is a very long life, so that'll save a lot of money for the maintenance staff, much better quality of quality lighting. So, you know, so there's benefits there. We're proposing solar in a couple of locations and along with lighting savings. The more energy you save, you know, it provides a hedge against utility cost increase. So that's some of the benefits of this project. Oh, I'll have Patrick go through the program scope, then I'll come back and talk about the financial overview. So just briefly, and before I let Patrick go through the detailed scope, so we have, you know, solar projects at a couple of locations, the water treatment plant at the Gap, air conditioning at the City Hall, and basically lighting at every every facility. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Patrick to briefly go through all the scope items.
Okay, so. So what you're seeing here is a five hundred and ten KW ground-mounted solar system at the water treatment plant in one of the aeration ponds. This pond was identified as not being used by the facility any longer. So we were able to utilize that land to offset the electrical usage at that site. So you'll notice that we took a notch out there going to the north because there's some trees in the park there. We didn't want the trees shading the panels because that really impacts the production of the panels. And then the two other ponds are currently being used for backwashing the filters at the plant. So this will offset about a sixth of the power here. So so this is the solar system for the Gashay Aquatic Park. And this will offset about eighty-five percent of the load on site there. You'll probably have seen, we've done some across the river at the Yuba County facilities. They're the same parking structures. You can park underneath them. They create quite a bit of shade. It's nice to park underneath. We'll have to remove, there's about twenty-five small trees in the parking lot right now. They're small right now, but they're actually an identified sycamores, which can grow fairly large. So we'll be removing those and working with the city to replace them in a different location. We will be keeping the palms that are to the southwest of the parking lot there to ensure the circle remains in that intersection. The next one here is solar thermal. We're going to put solar thermal panels on the rooftop of the aquatic park. This will offset the boiler gas consumption to heat the pool. So it's a really great program right now through PG&E that pays for the majority of the cost of the system. We have indoor lighting throughout most of the city facilities, and this is really great. It improves the light quality. And these lights last anywhere from fifteen, twenty years or more. So it really reduces your O and M costs. So we'll be looking at doing LED lighting for the outdoor lighting in all the buildings. Again, improving the light quality similar to your streetlights that you have here in the city. And we'll be doing the same at the city parks. All the city parks will be getting new lighting.
Could I ask you a question as we go along here?
Yeah.
Going back to the LED lights.
Sure.
The the ones that would be internal, they do have a longer life, so there's a good savings because of that. But how much energy savings is there between that and say fluorescent or incandescent lights?
Of course, it depends on the the fixture type because there's different generations of the fluorescent lamps. But it can be anywhere between like twenty-five to seventy-five percent depending on the actual light fixture. So we we try to ensure that the light level stay the same, so you're getting the same amount of light on the desk or the ground. So.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, and and then so I forgot to mention there on the interior lighting and exterior lighting, Title twenty-four has been updated now, and it's pretty rigorous now. And we're ensuring that we're going to comply with the Title twenty-four standards, which requires different dimming sensors and then occupancy sensors such as the parks. We'll get a dimmer that actually dims down the lights when there's no one in the area. So you're saving energy during those times. And it's actually a nice safety mechanism too, because you can kind of see people walk into the parks as the light turns on. So it's pretty neat. The next item here is the upgrades for the City Hall. The HVAC system here was identified as having several issues. So we're, we came up with a strategy to retrofit the fan to a variable air volume system, which pushes the air to the areas that are needed. We'll replace the compressor to improve the cooling efficiency of the building. We will also replace the energy management system so that facility staff can work and see how the unit's operating and troubleshoot it. And you can actually access it from anywhere within the city's Intranet. So it'll be really nice. You can access it at the courtyard. Then we also have this Aspen Air filter, which will reduce the pressure drop across the filter section and add, well, it's a good energy saver and clarifies the air quite a bit better. And then we're also going to put an energy management system at the police station to manage the scheduling of the units. This will actually integrate in with the same system here at City Hall, so facility staff can see both systems online. And we identified the pool pump as a really good energy saver. You can put a variable speed controller on it now to reduce the speed of the pump when the pool's not occupied, and it still maintains all rules for health code. There's one pump at the water treatment plant that runs twenty-four seven that is in need of efficiency upgrade. That will be included in the project. And then finally, the fire department, we work with them to work in replacing the breathable air compressor. And then finally, uh the fire department, um we work with them to uh work in replacing the breathable air compressor. Um, which happens to be the only unit on this side of the river. Um, and this serves um all entities within Sutter County and it's a really important piece of equipment. Um, so uh that's, that's the scope of work that we have here. So I'll hand it back over to Ashu.
Thanks, Patrick. Any question on the scope? Well, um, so we went through a pretty rigorous process um to do an outreach to the local. Uh, contractors as well as actually local financial institutions, and I'll talk about that in the next slide. And uh we're definitely not done with selecting contractors. This is just um. Preliminary outreach, so uh we've listed some of the people, uh some of the companies that we um sought out for uh giving proposals. Um, and uh when we, if the city council decides to move forward with the project, we'll complete our engineering and there'll be an opportunity again. For the local contractors, so we'll reach out to them again to see if they wanna participate and um. You know, see if uh they can compete. Um, so we're definitely not done with that uh process yet, uh but. Uh, that, that's an ongoing process until we are finished with the engineering. Do you have a question, sir?
I do have a question. Under the mechanical, there were three of the contractors that you reached out to that declined to bid or decided not to respond. Um, is that typical or why would they choose not to participate in this program?
Do you want me?
That, that would vary. Um, so Frank M. Booth actually did a great job for us at uh Yuba City or Yuba County, I'm sorry. Um, and they just, they said that they just couldn't handle the workload. Um, it's the same as E W Altman or WB Altman at the time. Um, R B Spencer showed up, but they declined to bid and, and I didn't get a reason from them, so.
Cause Booth and, and Al were both pretty good size companies. That's why I was surprised that they declined to bid on this.
And I, I was trying to get Frank and Booth to, to show up and I actually reached out to them twice to um bid on the project, but they declined both times.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, Larry Booth, I mean, I know him very well and um, you know, they did a two million dollar project for us um for uh Yuba County. Um, so we'll reach out the, to them again, uh you know, competition is good, so um. We'll definitely reach out to all of these people again and see if they're interested. So on the financing side, uh we reached out to fourteen institutions, um six of them are local. Um, one of them recommended another bank. I think that was. Immunity Business Bank, which is in West Sacramento. We even got a proposal from them, so. Fourteen companies were invited, seven of them declined to, uh did not respond or declined to bid, and you can see the names up there. And um. So. So the low bid kind of right now is Bank of America on a sixteen, I'm having trouble with this. On a sixteen year at two point nine nine. Uh, we use Bank of America extensively. Uh, PNC is the one who did. Actually, Bank of America did this. Yuba County project, uh PNC did S- Sutter County, they're at two point nine four six percent. Um, for a long term, um lease twenty years, uh Green Campus Partners, um. Came in at four point one eight percent. Uh, and some of these, um. If you exceed fifteen to sixteen years, the companies want uh an asset uh as collateral. Usually, um for a fifteen year lease, they'll just keep, they'll just have the project equipment, the solar panels, the LED lighting. As collateral, it's a simple transaction. Um, when you exceed around sixteen years, then you have to go, then they need a property like, you know, City Hall as collateral. It's nothing, uh, you know, for Sutter County, um, no, not for Sutter County, for Madera County. They have the jail as collateral and the county was laughing, it's go ahead and take over the jail, but you know, they're like essential, they're like essential buildings, so. That's uh, you know, will they ever do it? No, but that's. We'll work with that. So anyway, with real property, it, you know, we do it all the time. It gets a little more complicated. Financing will probably take two, three extra weeks. Um. Uh, as far as the financing is concerned, we have no financial interest in that. We do not make a dime on it. It's a direct contract between the city and the financing company. You can choose to work with any of these companies. It's entirely your decision. We will not recommend any one of them. Now, we have created cash flows based on the lowest, but if you decide to work with any other comp- uh. Financial company, including a local company, that's entirely up to, up to, up to the council. But we have, we have several cash flows and I, you know, we had to pick and choose what to present, so. We, we selected a few of them, so I wanted to show one where the city does not need to invest any money. And that is, um. You know, uh, so the cost of the project is four point nine, uh uh actually, say five million. Um, there's some construction period interest because uh during the construction, which is around slated to be around nine months. The city will have to pay interest uh during that time. Uh, in some cases, there's a closing cost. So in this case, the city would actually be financing five point two million over twenty years at four point one eight percent. There's some assumptions made by us, uh four and a half percent increase in electricity prices, three percent in natural gas and O and M. First year energy savings are two hundred and sixty thousand, natural gas savings are fourteen thousand. Uh, incentives from PG&E of hundred and thirty seven thousand. These are essentially for LED lighting. And some for, maybe some for uh the V F, uh the variable frequency drive. There's O and M savings, which is basically savings on material cost on lamps and ballasts. That you won't have to replace anymore because LED lamp, LED lights have, you know, twenty, twenty five year lifespan. Uh, also, um, on the air conditioning units, uh for City Hall, you don't have to spend any money keeping that up. So those are the total program savings, and let me, before I talk about lease payments, um. Measurement and verification cost, we are guaranteeing the energy savings. Um. To do that, we have to annually monitor the savings and that's our cost to monitor it. We do it for five years. Um. Savings are guaranteed for fifteen years. Uh, we will maintain the solar project um completely. Your staff does not have to do anything at all. Uh, including the solar thermal at the Gap. We structure the lease payment to come up with a net uh constant cash flow. So in this option, the city doesn't invest anything and the net savings are thirty one thousand. Net present value is around two million dollars uh under this option. Here's another option, same savings, um. This is uh, there's no closing costs here, um, and we are saying if the city makes and. This is from Bank of America, two point nine nine percent over sixteen years. If the city makes an annual city contribution of twenty thousand dollars per year, um, you know. Essentially, you're making a contribution of ten thousand. Uh, the net present value here is two point seven million. Uh, so this is where you, the city makes an annual contribution. Here's another one, this is from PNC, uh actually Bank of America is pretty close to. If the city invests six hundred thousand, um, you know, then it doesn't have to do any uh annual contribution. Similar sort of net present value. I actually got another proposal yesterday and uh. That one has three hundred thousand dollars. It's from Bank of America, actually, uh three hundred thousand, the city can invest three hundred thousand. And it's over sixteen years instead of fifteen, and you still have around thirteen thousand dollar savings. So it, and same range of net present value. So if the council decides to move forward with this project, um. Uh, I think one of the directions we would like to have is, you know, what financing, um. Cash flow would the city like? Would you like to make an upfront one-time contribution, annual contribution? Um.
Mr. Mayor, i- if I may, Mr. Jane is, is providing a great overview of information. I'd um, I'd suggest. That our finance director, Robin Bertagnin, would be able to take the information that he's provided. And come back with, to you with a recommendation with regard to the financing structure.
Right. Uh, ju- just to answer your question as far as what type of financing, lowest interest rate, less than two point nine nine. No contributions from the city whatsoever.
That's a little tough.
The best of our worlds.
Good negotiations, but I'm not uh.
Yeah.
Financing is completely out of our hands, you know. We're not, um, that's. We'll, we'll take your message back to the banks and say that's what the city wants.
I have a question concerning uh each of these uh analysis here. Uh, the top line is the Chevron program fee of nearly five million dollars.
Yeah.
What do we get for five million dollars?
All the projects that we listed, the entire scope of work, um, you're getting that, you're getting a guarantee. That for um, we'll guarantee the savings for fifteen years. If the savings are not what we estimated, what's in the contract, we'll write you a check every year. Um, so it's completely, um, you know, includes its turnkey, uh project management onsite, construction manager supervision. So turnkey price, um, everything's included.
That's including all of the equipment.
All the equipment, all the labor.
Wanted to clarify what that was.
Absolutely, you know.
Just a, a fee for managing this for us, so that's what I wanted to clarify.
No, thank you.
Hey, you John, you'll take that?
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I think that's um pretty much all we have. Um, will be. If the council moves forward, then we can complete this project in nine months. Um, there is. One more thing I would like to mention here, um, there's a change that's happening in our company, and I think it's important that council know that. Before you make a decision, um Chevron has decided to sell our division, Chevron Energy Solutions. And effective, I mean, this is not, this information has not been made public yet, but um, I think it's, it's material. It is now public, you're right. Um, um, so it's material information. I wouldn't want you to take, make a decision without knowing this. Um, so at the end of this month, uh, we would be divested from Chevron. We'll be part of a company called Oak Tree Capital. Um, Oak Tree Capital is an eighty, uh has eighty six billion dollars in assets. It's listed on the New York Stock Exchange. Entire team moves over, all our contracts are assigned. Um, you would still, if you move forward on uh the, uh with this project on September second. You will still sign a contract with Chevron that's just uh easier uh with documentation. And they will assign the contract over to Oak Tree Capital. The new name of the company is gonna be Optera Energy. Um, but again, the entire teams move o- team moves over, all our contracts are assigned. So you should see no difference in anything. Be happy to answer any other questions.
Questions, okay. If not, thank you, gentlemen, very, very much, and uh. And I think like our city manager, Steve Crager, mentioned that we'll have Robin dissect these numbers and uh come back with Diana.
Thanks a lot, appreciate it.
At our, at our next meeting, I believe the recommendation here is to direct staff to bring back a contract.
Yes, so one of the things, um, I did have a chance to talk to Robin Bertagni, our finance director. And she's going to be out of the office for the next couple of weeks, so it's unlikely that we're gonna be able to bring this back September second. It's more likely to be September sixteenth. Dependent upon um Optera having a contract in place for us to be able to review, have enough time to review. And then bring before council, so it could possibly be even beyond September sixteenth that we could bring this back.
What, what's the recommend, if I can get a recommendation from? Okay, got a motion? Got a, need a second? I'll second, okay. Second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Diana. Uh, item number sixteenth, uh is a Fifth Street Bridge replacement project. Adopt mitigated nega- negative declaration and amend the professional services agreement with Doken Engineering for final design services. Must be from Doken.
Evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Kevin Bradford, Senior Engineer in the Public Works Department. I'm happy to report that item sixteen before you tonight contains two major milestones related to the Fifth Street Bridge replacement project. The first item is your consideration of a mitigated negative declaration to satisfy CEQA requirements for the project. The second item is your consideration of an amendment to the city's current contract with Doken Engineering. Which would allow final design and right-of-way activities to begin. So starting with the CEQA item, uh the city's consultant, Doken Engineering, has prepared an environmental document. That includes an initial study and mitigated negative declaration for CEQA compliance. The city is acting as the lead agency for CEQA on this project, so your action tonight is to consider the, the mitigated negative declaration. Caltrans also has a role in approving the environmental document due to federal funding being involved on the project. Caltrans staff has reviewed the document and are recommending Caltrans approval once the city approves the mitigated negative declaration. Also want to point out that the environmental document was circulated for public review and we received a total of nine comments. All of which have been incorporated uh and addressed in the mitigated negative declaration before you tonight. And none of which revealed any new un- or avoidable significant effects. On the uh final design contract amendment in two thousand and ten, in conjunction with the city of Marysville, Sutter County. And Yuba County, we issued a request for proposals for preliminary du- design and environmental work. And the request specifically stated that the consultant selected for the work could be awarded. A uh final design contract at the city's discretion. And our intention there was to make sure that all interested parties, um considering the RFP. Would understand that final design uh component could be added to their contract at a later date at the city's discretion. So city staff and uh staff from Marysville, Sutter County, Yuba County, and Caltrans. Um, are all recommending that we continue with Doken Engineering. And what sets Doken apart, um in our experience, is that number one, they were selected um through a rigorous RFP process to begin with. Um, as the most qualified consultant for this work. Uh, number two, they've performed very well on the preliminary design and environmental document. And number three, their familiarity with the environmental aspects of the project makes them uniquely positioned. To efficiently acquire the permits and make sure that the conditions of those permits are incorporated into our plans and specs. So in accordance with council authorization, um Doken has provided the city with a proposal for performing preliminary or final design. Staff uh from the city and Caltrans have reviewed that proposal and found the level of effort and billing rates to be consistent with similar. Uh, consultant contracts. Caltrans headquarters has audited the proposal and found that the markups to, um are consistent with state and federal. Uh, guidelines against, uh safeguards, excuse me, against unfair charges. And just to point out a general rule of thumb is that final design costs u- usually run about eight to ten percent of the construction cost. For a job of this size, and Doken's proposal is coming in at less than seven. Um, sufficient funds are budgeted through the CIP for this contract amendment, and um the cost will ultimately be reimbursed. Through state and federal grants. Um, the Caltrans is recommending that the city amend the current contract instead of entering into a new one. Staff agrees with that recommendation because the review process at Caltrans and the Federal Highways Administration is. Quite a bit more cumbersome if you start a new contract. Uh, using a contract amendment would streamline that process. Um, in summary, so staff is recommending uh your approval of the mitigated negative declaration. And an amendment to our contract with Doken for final uh design services. We prepared a uh anticipated milestone schedule for your information on the overhead. Um, and with that, I'd be happy to take any uh questions council might have.
Questions, good, Mayor.
Given the fact that if we could use Doken who already has experience with this project and uh. Should expedite the design on this project, when could we expect to have final design plans on this?
Final design, um we're showing here that basically February of twenty sixteen, that's roughly a year and a half. Um. You know, that, I think at this point, the critical path I. You know, that, I think at this point, the critical path item is gonna be obtaining the permits. So at this point, we could probably have the design sitting on the shelf, but still have some permits that we're chasing and have to. You know, wrap into the final design at the last.
So do we have to wait for those permits until the design is completed, or can we start doing that concurrently?
I I think we're familiar enough with the project that, um, you know, we we could incorporate those. Towards the end, in other words, get the final design, um, pretty much finished. And then just make sure that the construction bid documents incorporate any conditions.
Alright, thank you.
Kevin, how um, realistic are those dates? Cause originally we were looking at starting the bridge in two thousand and fifteen. To be, you know, completed a year later, now we're moved to two thousand sixteen with the completion to two thousand eighteen. Uh, do you see any more delays and possibly starting in eighteen and going to twenty or? And how do we move this thing forward, kinda like our levy project that was way out there and expediting it, we're able to move that thing quicker than what was out there?
Yeah, at this point, um. Looking back on on what's been done to date, um, the the big wild card was the the whole en- environmental document. Which we're making a major step if we can get past that hurdle tonight. The next big wild card would be the the permitting, and so I think being proactive with the the um regulatory agencies. Getting that process started quickly, if we identify any any hangups, um, you know, go through whatever. Um, resources we have at Caltrans to help push those permits through. But the schedule, um, I think it's very realistic. I I think that it represents what will happen if everything goes right in the permitting process.
Because I would think that the longer we wait, uh, the costs will probably increase as well. And also what we have budgeted for it, and what we've obtained from grants, uh, by the time we get this thing started. Possibly may not be enough to complete our project, so we'll have to go back and revisit those numbers. Cause those numbers that we got, if we started the work today, or in our original date. Now we're pushing it back by a year, which could skyrocket some of our costs.
Yeah, um, one other um, component of this, of the actual construction schedule is the. The generous grant that we received from SACOG, um, seventeen plus million dollars. That is stip dollars that is programmed in federal fiscal year twenty seventeen. So, in in in, short of getting the CTC to. Expedite that funding, the construction is pretty much fixed. We'll try our best to have the design sitting on the shelf, permits in hand, to expedite it if funding becomes available.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, what's your recommendation?
I'd like to move the item, or both recommendations. I'd like to jump over that hurdle myself, so I'll second the recommendation.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries, thank you. Item number seventeen, fiscal year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, city council priorities and goal progress report, this is just for note and file report.
Mister Mayor, it does does say note and file there, but if you'd like a presentation, I'd be happy to give you one.
Any questions, uh, you wanna overview of it, note and file, or just a little synopsis of it, I mean, I've seen it, I've read it. Okay.
You good?
Thank you, we're good.
Alright.
Perfect, we'll jump over to business, uh, from city council, city council reports, council member Buckland.
I attended a number of days at Yuba Sutter Fair, um, the new format at the fair seemed to work out for him. Um, we're interested to to see what their final numbers are and what their bottom line was, uh. And and hopefully, uh, that was a beneficial move, um, related to uh. Uh, the operation of the fair itself, attended the government relations and personnel affairs committee meeting at SACOG. Uh, once again, looking at environmental documents, um, that that are being. Uh, commented on in regard to Valero moving uh crude through, um, the region. And uh, we certainly don't know what that path of travel is for for this crude, but uh, they have stepped up, Valero kinda stepped up their game. And are wanting to move a more volatile uh product, uh, by train down to Benicia. Uh, for for refining. Also, uh, received more information on our metro- metropolitan transportation uh plan. And uh, as a as a component of that, there'll be some public outreach coming uh forward. And I'm just happy to to note that uh, the T Garden House, Cindy Payne. Um, has made that facility available, uh, to SACOG, uh, for one of the of the. Uh, community outreach uh programs, uh, here in Yuba City, so that will be a uh, a great component. Attending the Yuba City Unified School District, uh, meeting, just the, this is a government. Uh, meeting, uh, at at the district office. Uh, talked, you know, primarily about some of the uh, the different courses that are, that are available and and ways that the community. Uh, can become involved in, and one of those, and it continues to come up, is their life management. Um, program in which uh, community members can go in and be involved with young. Or or the younger students, um, in in bringing forward some of the life management decisions early on. And give them a skill set, uh, to be able to be successful and also to return to our community. Uh, they also gave us a little bit of a facilities update, uh, their current plan that they've adopted. And uh, they are looking at building two new gymnasiums, uh, within the Yuba City area, both of them at about ten thousand square feet. Which will allow for more, um, use for recreational programs. Uh, within, um, the Yuba City area. I think that that's about it, it's been slow.
Yeah, councilman Mon.
Thank you, uh, some of the same events, the the fair was a was a good event, um. Committee meetings, uh, went to uh, Yuba Sutter Transit Authority meeting, uh. We extended the contract for Viola, that's the company that's been, uh, administering, managing, uh, running the, uh. Staffing the Yuba Sutter Transit, uh, the buses, uh. That was a big, uh, it's about a fifteen million dollar contract, and that they received. Uh, other than that, at the Yuba Sutter Transit, uh, on the park and ride, uh, areas, uh, we've been dealing with the. Video, uh, cameras, place placing that, making it safe for the. And for the riders to park their car there, not worry about it, we had some issues in the past, so we're working on that. Uh, in addition to that, and and then we have a meeting, uh, for the Yuba Sutter Transit Authority this Thursday evening at four, the Yuba County Government Center. Uh, Yuba City, uh, now Yuba Sutter, eh, Housing Authority, it's now actually. Sutter Nevada Housing Authority and uh, may become Nevada Yuba, so the Housing Authority, it's been uh, growing. And uh, lot of, lot of stuff uh, happening there as far as uh, buying, uh. So some, uh, apartment complex, older apartment complex to uh, provide, um, lower income housing. Also, uh, rebuilding some of the buildings there at the main campus on, um. Percy and Garden Highway, rebuilding the uh, community center, been getting some federal and uh, state funding. Other than that, it's just same, a lot of the same community, uh, great community, uh, it does slow down a little bit in summer, so uh, it's still busy enough.
Great, thank you, council member Starkey.
Thank you, Mayor Gil, uh, I, on the sixteenth, I had the uh, opportunity to represent the city of Yuba City at the Peach Festival Reception. Held at the Marriott Iron Museum, we got to interact with a lot of different government people, elected officials, and it was, it was good for collaboration and building bonding. For our communities. On seventeenth, I had the opportunity to attend the Regional Transit Authority meeting with, um, Councilman Mon. He's been instrumental in leading the surveillance, uh, uh. Monitoring of the parking lots so that people feel safe leaving their cars there, thank you very much for that. And also the regional waste management meeting. I attended the Chamber of Breakfast where Terry from the hospital came and gave us an update. She did not, however, inform us about the uh, state coming in and seizing records, that's, for some reason she left that out. Um, on the thirty first, Assemblywoman Dan Logue had a small business uh forum. Which was quite interesting, his attempt was to get different department heads from the different departments in the state. That work with small business to help them understand what they need to do in order to be successful and. Go through all the trials and tribulations of the forms they need to fill out. Uh, on the fifth, on National Night Out, I had the opportunity to ride with Officer Eschman to listen to. Uh, citizens' concerns, uh, from different neighborhoods at the parties we attended. And last week, I had the opportunity to spend time in Gray Eagle, California. Uh, there was Gray Eagle, California, it's a little community north of Truckee on Highway eighty-nine. And uh, they're a small community and they're facing some tremendous water issues, and so. I had about a week's opportunity to spend up there looking at how they're managing, uh, the water, and it was quite interesting. It was quite interesting, so, uh, here ended my report.
Great, thank you, uh, Vice Mayor Duke.
Um, attended a couple of the same events that uh, Councilmember Starkey did, just wanna know how many of the peach margaritas did you drink at the uh? At the museum the other night?
Like, uh, like when we have our closed sessions, that's, I can't comment on that.
Alright, very good, alright.
Oh, okay.
And then also attended the uh, Yuba Sutter Chamber Business Connection and where. They discussed the updates and or gave us an update about uh, what's happening with with Rideout. Um, and then also attended the the business forum with Dan Logue and. Unfortunately, it was a little bit frustrating because, uh, as Dan brought in a number of the different people from, from the state. Uh, regulatory agencies, um, and they explained about what all they do, I I I. Came to the conclusion at the break, I was talking to Rick Jimmerson, I asked him, I said, why would any business wanna do business in California? Uh, it's the regulation in this state has just gotten to be overwhelming as far as, uh, of. All the requirements for businesses, and I I thank Dan for having that public forum, at least exposing this and showing. Businesses what's out there, I mean, the the biggest frustration most businesses have is not knowing what they have to do. And so it, uh, it was, it was a good session, but it was a bit frustrating in 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 addition. I also participated with the National Night Out, rode with, uh, Fire Department out of Station One, and we attended a couple neighborhood parties and, uh. It was good to to meet with the the neighbors and and hear their concerns and, uh, and ex- explain to them what's going on with the city and. What we're doing, and so that was a good night, it's always good to get out and meet with with the individuals in the public. Subufka had uh, three meetings since we last met, uh, and things are moving well with the the levy project. I will say that there are public tours that will be available, and I believe it's on the twenty eighth, but you can check with the Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency. If you're interested in going and taking a tour of the levies and see the work that's going on. If you get an opportunity, I suggest you do that, it's fascinating to see how this process works. Uh, also attended the uh, California Emerging Technologies Fund, uh, Committee Meeting in Sacramento. They are are working with, uh, the state and rural communities to provide wireless, uh, broadband. To underserved areas in the state. Uh, public meeting for the proposed sphere of influence that was identified by the county's general plan update. South of Bog Road, down to Berry Road, met with, uh, a number of, uh. Citizens who were, uh, uh, very vocal in in their concerns about that, so it was, it was good to be there and help represent the. The city and and what that process might look like if we decided to, uh, expand that sphere of influence. And then Gilser Drainage District Meeting and Mosquito Vector Meeting, um, the Mosquito Vector, nothing to report out of the Gilser. The Mosquito Vector, there's been two, uh, human cases of fatalities in Sutter County. In the past month, uh, because of West Nile virus, and so it's. Uh, very serious thing in our area, so if you're out in the evening, wear, uh, either some type of mosquito repellent or long sleeve clothing. To protect yourself because it is out there, the district is working very hard to. Uh, spray in the areas and and make it safe for us, but it, we have to do our part also, that's all I have to report.
Right.
Uh, one other thing.
Missed a meeting?
I, no, I didn't miss a meeting, but there is a stand down, uh, for veterans in the river bottoms, and that'll be Thursday and Friday of this week, and it's. I recommend and and hope that all of you can go help support the veterans there, and if you know veterans who need help with different services, that's a good thing for them to go and. Participate in.
Great, thank you, it'd be nice to say we didn't attend any meetings, but that's never the case. Uh, besides the city council meetings, all of the council members sit on various committees that take up hours and hours of the time. I've been on same committees, but I'm not gonna reiterate a lot of the stuff, but one of the things I do wanna point out and clarify. You know, the vice mayor and I both sit on the Serb's Flood Agency Committee Meetings, which has to do with the levies that are being fixed. And it's probably one of the largest projects in the United States, especially in the Western United States. That's being, uh, taking place at this point in time on the levies. If you have not taken a tour of this particular levies that they're doing, I would absolutely encourage each and every one of you to sign up, take a tour. Uh, because after all, it is because of yourselves that we were able to pass this assessment. For our community, we're getting federal, state, and local funds to get this levy fixed, number one, first of all. Secondly, you never ever believe everything that you read in the paper. I think the paper had the the article that came out, the levy costs balloons up to seventeen million dollars. And I just wanna tell you that, that I think if, on a worst case scenarios, if everything goes the wrong way. Then I think costs can go up to seventeen million dollars, costs are not at seventeen million dollars. When they originally budgeted the project, uh, they had anticipated perhaps finding maybe two burial, Indian burial sites. And to the state, they found fifteen of them, and so that requires a lot of archaeologists, that requires a lot of digging, that requires. Certifications, that requires a lot of equipment moving, you gotta stop that section, you gotta. Unarm the entire equipment, move it back again where it needs to go. Uh, so their true cost, I believe that they've incurred over budget in the sense is about four million bucks to date. But as far as an overall project savings from what they thought would cost, they're saving some money on it, so our goal as far as representing. The city's interests, the vice mayor and myself, along with other agencies, is that by the time it's all said and done. And we actually end up with a savings, not an overage on that particular cost, so, but something.
One other point too, and uh, the mayor mentioned that when we, we put out the envi- environmental documents on this project, there were two identified sites. And we we reached out to the different Indian tribes and asked them to identify any sites that they may know. Well, unfortunately, they don't wanna do that until the last minute, so it was not identified in the environmental documents until we started moving ground, and then they were there and said. Here's a map. Here, so we did what we could do to try to identify those and budget for those. But when you don't have that information, you can't budget for it, so just to to let the public know that. We were doing what we could do, but there's some things you can't do if you don't know the information.
And and some of the sites that they were identified were on the maps that the Indian tribes did provide us. But there were many sites that were not even on their maps either, so it's not something that they knew. But again, it's a great project, it's moving forward, uh, great steam, so please take a look out at that uh, project that's happening right here on Live. Boulevard, you can see the dirt leveled down, so take a look at it, uh, with that, I have nothing else to report. Uh, other than I thought it was very, very nice for the Martins to uh, be here and, uh. Come and accept the proclamation and the key to our city, uh, cause they've definitely helped us, uh, increase our image. Uh, for the city of Yuba City, and the awareness, and especially wanna say thank you to all of our community members who've come out and supported California Chrome. Uh, cause we definitely wouldn't have been able to do it, uh, without the support of our community and our sponsors, so, great job there. Uh, with that, meeting's adjourned.